...at seven o'clock, that means it's time to call the September fourth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Whitehall City Council to order for the purpose, considering such matters that may come before it. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Here.
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 President. Next week on our agenda, we have the approval of minutes for the August twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen agenda and regular meetings.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the August twenty-first minutes.
Second. The motion by Ms. Conneson, the second by Mr. Cantor for approval of the August twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen minutes. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Ailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Almore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zach Woodruff. He has a special presentation planned for us this evening. Zach, what have you got on that?
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to start by introducing Ryan Andrews. He is the Cities Engineer with EMHNT. The city, there's legislation on City Council's agenda this evening asking for passage of a resolution support of a Ohio Public Works Commission, an OPWC proposed project that would stretch along Etna Road from Hamilton to Yearling and then cross over Yearling and carry down Sigmund from Yearling to Beechwood. The ultimate goal of this would be to not only improve the existing infrastructure, but also improve pedestrian connectivity within our community. Ultimately, this plan would link through a bike path, Beechwood Elementary, Etna Road Elementary, the K Avenue, Yearling Learning Campus, and Rosemore, all through one, one safe bike path, one multi-use trail. It starts, as I mentioned, at Hamilton Road and extends down to Yearling and crosses over, it goes to Beechwood. Would include new pavement, spot curb and gutter replacement, the installation of Yearling Road-style streetlights and a six-to-eight-foot multi-use path on the south side of the road. And so that would be on the Etna Road Elementary side. Ryan, stop if I miss anything.
You know great.
Thanks. That's why I like bringing it. So these are exhibits that start, Ryan, can we zoom in a little bit?
Yeah.
Try to get zoomed in a little more.
Oh, yeah, now I can read a little better.
Let's move over to Hamilton Road view. So as we know, OPWC funded a Etna Road project that went from Hamilton to Country Club, included the lights, included landscaping and that multi-use trail. This is an extension of that path. Most of the work would be done in the right-of-way. There would be the need to secure some general easements. As an example, obviously, from Whitehall City School District. What we've proposed here along and in front of Etna Road Elementary is to have the path actually tucked back away from the road. It would actually kind of wrap, if you kind of visualize where their current sign is, it would be behind the sign. So improving pedestrian safety in that particular stretch of Etna, because it would sit back from the road and miss most of their mature trees and their signs, so those costs wouldn't have to be incurred in the project. Do you want to go to the next, I mean, do you want to go to the other?
Question?
Yeah, absolutely. Please jump in.
Is there a sidewalk there?
There currently is a, on the south side?
On the side of where the school is, yes.
Currently?
Yes.
Yes, there currently is a sidewalk.
Will it still be?
No, we would take that sidewalk out, just like we did on Etna Road, for the Etna Road project from Hamilton to Country Club. If you remember, there was a sidewalk on both sides of the road. We removed the sidewalk, that was a three-foot approximate sidewalk on the south side, and replaced it with this eight-foot wide bike path. So it would be the same thing here. So sidewalks would come out and be replaced with, with this bike path. In most of the, most of the area, the bike path would be separated, like it is today, from the road with, with a small tree lawn, approximately two, two feet, so about thirty inches. Again, depending on the right-of-way that we have.
Question. It says we replace curb and gutter.
Spot curb and gutter.
Okay, not both sides total.
It is not both sides total. The, the, if you recall, Councilman, when we start looking at and evaluating OPWC projects, what we are cognizant of always is finding projects that are not only the most needy or deserving or improve the community, but also ones that score the best. And when you cross over a three-million-dollar threshold, you start losing points in your application. This project comes in, the engineer's estimate at this time, before we get into full engineering, is two million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. So we can maintain those things.
What's, what's the example of spot replacement? Because those curbs is, they're not that old.
So what I would tell you, in the stretch of Etna that I'm sure you're referring to, there'd be less spot curb and gutter replacement there. There's a higher percentage down on Sigmund where some of the curb is in more disrepair. And so when it's in bad shape, so we just did most of Fairway Oaks, nicked subdivision, and we did spot curb and gutter there, so where it's necessary. I will tell you, fixing the drainage in the storm sewer and the curb and gutter at Bernhard and Etna is in this project. And so if fully funded, we would include the addition of a new storm inlet at that corner that would tie into our storm, so it would alleviate the flooding that occurs, the ponding that occurs at that corner. I do want to point out, because I've heard it from the audience, this, this isn't, this has nothing to do, will not improve, will not impact taxes at all. What we've asked for, Ohio Public Works Commission, is a seventy-five, twenty-five grant alone, where the state pays seventy-five percent of the project, the remaining twenty-five percent, the city's share is converted into an eighteen-to-twenty, twenty-year interest-free loan. So it's a way that the city can pay for large infrastructure projects over a period of time, rather than trying to come up with our portion at one time. Pardon?
There won't be an increase on our taxes?
No, ma'am. Zero, zero tax increase. So you, this is money that comes from the federal government through the state and no money on increases. Are there any, before I, because I know the audience is going to have questions, Mr. President, are there any other questions from members of council? Yes, sir.
How much will the width of the sidewalk increase on the north side, at least on this portion of Etna, from its, you know, its current width, maybe three, four feet? I can't tell from the drawing if, I see a dotted line.
So, Mr. President, we're not, this project at this time does not envision replacing sidewalk on the north side.
Okay, so the existing, so nobody on the north side of the street is going to lose?
No one, no one on the north side of the street is going to see any differences in this project, with the exception of curb and gutter that could be replaced and the addition of new streetlights.
Does the road get reopened any time?
Well, ma'am, if I could, let me answer the council questions, and I'm absolutely going to ask this. It seems like the letters that we sent out to talk, telling people about this project really worked. Good.
We sent, we sent two, so I think.
So the distance from road center to the current sidewalk on the south side, to the inside edge or the long side, not the easement side or right-of-way side, what is that distance from road center currently?
I can't tell you that.
So my question is, what will it become if you're changing that sidewalk to six feet, eight feet?
Six, eight feet. Right now, there's probably about four or five foot grass strip between the back of the curb and the front of the sidewalk on that side.
You'll reduce that to two feet?
We probably reduce it down to two and a half to three feet. So we're trying to kind of split the difference, having to kind of keep the motorbike path in the center line of the existing sidewalk the same, so that, you know, we're taking a little bit from the street side and then expanding a little bit.
I, I'd say if we were going to be on the, to be conservative, I would say no more than three.
No more than three, what?
A three-foot expansion of the existing sidewalk, I think is what you're asking, if I'm, if I'm.
Correct. I kind of figured it would be closer to two if you go a foot toward the curb.
I think you could be right. I mean, typically, the bike path we put in on Etna is eight feet. Our parks director would tell you the national standard is ten. But we felt that was maybe too aggressive. So eight feet is what we'd be proposing. Again, this is, we have not gone into final engineering, we have not gone into full right-of-way plans. That's something that if we were awarded, our application is due in the next couple of weeks. And then we would find out in December if we were awarded. If we were, we would spend all of nineteen working on engineering and with neighbors and community stakeholders to have a fully developed engineered plans, other plans. We bid that out in January of two thousand and twenty for a construction schedule in the spring of two thousand and twenty. So again, that's why I want to give you the worst-case scenario, if I can word it that way, of maybe three feet. I think it's probably closer to two, but I would think.
That's from the south side of the sidewalk to the curb, three feet to?
Okay, so.
From sidewalk, where the residence actual property line starts.
So.
It's not the property line, I understand?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Okay, from the curb to the sidewalk, you're saying you're going to do?
I'm thinking from the back of the curb to the, we'll call it a bike path. We would think it would be somewhere in the two-foot range. Then there'd be approximately a eight-foot bike path. Which again, would then extend past the existing sidewalk.
Right.
At the three feet.
Okay. And that three feet?
My maximum worst case.
Right. And that three feet is still within the easement?
That's, that's what, that's something that we'll get into in final engineering. We think it's pretty close, just looking at rough numbers. But in cases where it doesn't, we will be seeking easements from the property owners, similar to what we did for the Etna Road project, securing easements along the way for the bike path.
Is that a process that might hold up the whole project?
So, I mean, I don't believe it would. If we're awarded in December, Ryan and I have already started having conversations about, you know, we don't have to bid the job until January of two thousand and twenty, so have final plans the very last part of nineteen. It gives us an entire year to work with property owners and make sure that we're getting, everybody's swimming in the same direction. I don't believe it'll delay the project.
And I guess back to my original question, it sort of is, what type of impact will it have on those residences down through that entire corridor? And you can't answer that right now because you haven't done a proper.
I think it's going to have a, ultimately, I think it's going to have a positive impact.
The bike path, yes, but some folks might be concerned that some of the frontage is being taken away from them.
Right, that some of the existing right-of-way or easements may transition from grass to a paved bike path.
Right.
The other advantage, I will say, is that currently, under our code, sidewalks are the responsibility of residents, as you know. Once the city puts in a paved city bike path, then the maintenance for that bike path then ultimately would be the city's. So any, any maintenance responsibility for that stretch would go from the residence to the city.
Including snow removal?
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
How long is a project going to take?
Typically, a project of this magnitude, I would say, would probably be a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty-day project. At no time would the street be closed. It certainly would have impact on, on the roadway. But it is less intrusive and less significant in magnitude than the Etna Road Phase One project, where we replaced storms, where we replaced water lines. We aren't doing that yet. And so, you know, most of the work is going to be outside of the roadway. And then, you know, there'll be a mill and a replacement of pavement. And so obviously, that's similar to other repaving projects that we do throughout the city every year.
Is this going to be, trying to plan the start of this after the school year? So it don't impact the children's walking and busting and all of that? Particularly right in front of Etna there, a couple blocks?
I would think that we're going to do our very best, especially as it relates to the bike path, to try to have those things accomplished during the, during the summer months. I mean, that is, that is our goal, would absolutely be our goal. There's a lot of work that they can be doing, that, you know, putting in the conduit for the streetlights, as an example. That can be, those are all things that can happen, you know, while kids are still in school. And then, you know, the actual addition of the bike path we put in, I would think during the summer. I say that now, but we're also eighteen months away from bidding it and getting the schedule for the contract.
Right, but there's an awful lot of traffic here in school.
I don't disagree with that at all, but nothing, no, nothing can be worse than the first phase of Etna Road, so I'm sure we'll be better than that.
Will circuits for the new lights be underground?
Oh, yeah, it'll be, it'll be similar to, again, our, the, the vision of this project is a continuation of the, what I'll call the first part of Etna project, that the lights continue down to Yearling, continue down to Beechwood. The electric for that is all done underground and, and, you know, we don't have the, the overhead Cobra lights that are currently placed.
However, all power poles that are still there, that are there, will still be there.
Correct. This is not going to bury all the electric. You know, we're not, that would be an eight-million-dollar project.
And those lights that will be installed are, of course, much lower than the existing pole lights, and they're going to be closer to the residential housing areas. They're going to have some kind of guard or shield.
I think. Yeah. They'd be similar to ones.
Because they're going to be really close to those properties.
Correct. And I think if you look at Yearling Road, there's a shield on those that, you know, stops the light from shining directly into someone's house, so it's certainly not the goal. We want it to be down and towards the roadway.
I know you talked about like easements and how much, I know one of the big concerns I got was how far it's going to go onto their properties, so could you maybe explain that a little, like, in case people don't understand?
Sure. So right now, from the center line of the road, there is what's known as the right-of-way or a general easement that residents maintain, that the city actually has ownership of. One of the questions earlier was, how much wider is that going to get with this new bike path? So if people think about, you know, how much closer, how much, you know, wider is that bike path? I think, again, our conservative estimate is to say not more than three feet. So I would think not more than three feet.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. I, yeah, I was just thinking that maybe not everybody understood what easements are.
I, I think, explain the center line of the road up to, of course.
Is that twenty or twenty-five feet there on Sigmund?
I gotta be honest with you, I don't, I don't know what the exact right-of-way is off the top of my head for Sigmund. That sounds about right.
Right.
Typically speaking, on every public road, there is on, you know, from the, from the dead center of the road, not necessarily the center lane, but from the dead middle of the road, extending to each side of the roadway and outside the road, right-of-way, or outside the roadway, is what's known as the right-of-way or an easement that the city has ownership of, but that's maintained by the property owner. It's generally where your utilities are, it's generally speaking where water lines and storms there or sand territories are. This project may require the city to ask to have that right-of-way or that easement expanded by a couple of feet to accommodate this bike path. Ultimately, the, the bike path that's owned by the city for the public use has to be located inside of an easement or the right-of-way. It's not something that can be put, should be put on private property. Is that, is that a better explanation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other questions from members of council?
One other question, but I want to thank you for sending out the letters to the residents, because obviously that worked, and you will keep them appraised on figuring of any.
Oh, yeah. So, to say the least. So now comes the portion one. Who asked questions out here? Yes, ma'am.
So I, just to be, talk to a simple, so we all, I understand it. We've got parking on the, street parking on the north side.
Yes, ma'am.
On Etna, so that means that my sidewalk, and there's a strip of grass, and there's the curb, is also going to be closer to the.
On the north side?
On the south side.
So the curb, the, the location of the curb doesn't change? The, the area of grass between the back of the curb and the sidewalk may shrink a little, and the sidewalk would turn into a bike path that would be wider.
But there'll still be a sidewalk?
Instead of a, instead of a concrete sidewalk on the south side, there would be this eight-foot paved path. You wouldn't have both.
So kids will walk to the school or walk to the bike path?
Yes, ma'am. So if you have a chance to walk to drive down or be near the first phase of this project that we did on Etna between Hamilton and Country Club, it is very common that you will see people walking and biking both on this eight-foot wide back, on this eight-foot wide path. That's, that's very common in the part we actually show.
Are responsible for things, no, on this path?
It's no different than your cycle. Separates one.
Same, half, one shovel.
Well, you don't have, I mean, you, I can't advise you how much to shovel, but, I mean, the amount that you decide to shovel is entirely dependent on present. That's not to say that the city, I can't make a guarantee or promise that we are going to shovel it, so I don't, I want to stop short of promising that today. But it's certainly, I can tell you, as a service director, it is something that we're looking at. If you looked at last year, we did start to experiment on how to, with manpower allows, how to shovel the snow off of Yearling Road, at least on the east side. So it is something that with, you know, different equipment, we are looking at. I just can't make a promise today that we're going to, we're going to do better.
So my understanding is that you're going to take three feet of my yard for a bike path?
Pass the sidewalk.
That no one uses it?
But no one?
We live right next to the beach, we're right in school. And there's none of it. Bike ride that goes down through there ever.
I, I don't necessarily.
I said I don't have breakfast or coffee.
Yeah.
There's no lights, like, that never, never.
I, I can't speak to how many, you would know better than I how many bikes there are or aren't. But I will tell you, having a connected, having a connected community that is easier for pedestrians than for bike riders is, I think, something very important.
That's the sidewalk's floor. The pedestrians just walk down. And they're in the street, they don't see the sidewalk, that much, not my business.
I, I will tell you, my, my personal experience is, if you install bike paths, more people are after you. I, I think that's, I believe that does matter.
How would this affect drainage on the street?
Really, the existing drainage isn't going to change very much. We'll look at all of the existing inlets and the existing storm sewer as part of the design. And we may add some drainage in certain places. You know, roads that were built in this era have pretty far spacing between storm inlets. And nowadays, when we build something or we design a roadway using modern standards, we put inlets a lot closer together to put the storm, to get the water off the road. So we'll look at it. We have in the budget that Zach mentioned earlier, a certain amount of bike, storm sewer, bike path and storm inlets that we can add in certain places. Obviously, there's one spot, and we know we're going to have one in the intersection of Bernhard, but we might be putting it in other places along the corridor as well, just to kind of help that drainage. I think, I think it is safe to, to say, though, this is in no way going to make drainage worse. No.
My issue is, I think that's more important than this bike path. I have, since I've been here, I've been here about three years, twice have I had to haul a storm because my basement is flooded. I get water collected right there in front, I live on Sigmund, right a couple houses down from the other end of the school. Water sits there all the time, or at the intersection of Beechwood and Sigmund. When the rain's real hard, I can just talk to you about three feet of water down there that just sits there. People got to turn around in cars, people go into my driveway, turning up quick, because we can't keep that intersection. I feel like that's more important than the bike path.
Exactly.
Because, like I said twice, I've had to haul my storms, and I've got a washer, dryer, clothes, all those, all types of stuff, twice. I feel like that's more important than a bike path, but.
Just wanted to give the council a hard word of thank you.
And I, I appreciate that. If we did a project just on storm sewer, it, it would never score high enough to get the funds. And so again, as I mentioned earlier, part of this process is finding the projects, this is a very competitive grant application with all other, with all of the other communities in central Ohio applying for the same amount of money. Right, you remember how many applications they had last year?
I don't know, twenty-five, I think.
And they funded twelve?
Maybe eight or nine.
Okay, so maybe you're, so I, I hear that it, that, I grew up on Mayflower right there to Ben, and so heavy rain, that's, I understand exactly that problem. But there is, there isn't, this application, OPWC application, just to improve the storm, isn't going to score high enough to, to be awarded the bucks. It just won't. That's not to say, again, at this point, there certainly are things that we can do to alleviate some, again, Bernhard and that's going to be one of them, where the water does pond. And so, you know, Sigmund and Beechwood is part of this project boundary, and so we certainly would look to see if there are some improvements we can make in the storm as part of this larger project. Yes, ma'am?
There are not a lot of streets in Whitehall that don't even have a sidewalk. Why is screwing up my street more important than getting people going to have a sidewalk as my one?
So, I, I don't mean to, I certainly don't think we're screwing up your street. I, well, absolutely, but again, the streets that you're talking about. So we had this same conversation with a couple residents a couple years ago who live in the Glencoe Subdivision, right, live on Westfall. And that was their question. Westfall's never going to score high enough to get the grant. It's just not based on traffic flow, based on traffic volume, based on how many public community assets it's connecting. One of the reasons this grant, we think, is going to score really well, is because it connects Beechwood Elementary to Etna Road Elementary, and then when you combine with the first phase to Yearling Learning Campus and two parks. It links the public.
If we don't even feel like anything needs to be done on Sigmund and on Sigmund, um, why are we even going for this grant? You know, it's like, just because you can?
I think the pavement needs to be looked at.
Okay.
I think the pavement needs to be looked at.
And it's fine.
I think. I think pavement needs to be looked at. I think improving connectivity for pedestrians and bike paths is important in the community as a whole. I think adding bike paths in this community is an important thing. I think improving connectivity with better sidewalks and wider sidewalks is important. And I think improving the lighting in a community also makes it important. And if we can get the state to pay for seventy-five percent of it, I think that's, I think that's worthy of them going forward for the vote.
Okay, but the children on Westfall and other streets in that area that do not have a sidewalk, that do not have lights, they don't count for anything?
No, ma'am. And I.
They don't rank high, and why, they continue to walk in the dirt, in the grass? I saw a family pushing their baby carriage, mare, pushing their baby carriage in the grass. So they don't bathe?
For the purpose of this grant.
You don't care about the children there?
Well, clearly, I care about the children next to me. I, I think that's.
And do you ride your bikes in the city, or what?
Do I ride my bike in the city? No, ma'am, but when we talk to lots of your friends and neighbors, they do, and they'd like to see more bike paths. So again, I, I understand your concern. Do you have a question, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't go on that and give an any thought to the parking problem.
To the parking problem? You expand on that.
Be less, more parking. We already have a problem up and down the whole street.
I don't.
This is two thousand and eighteen, every home. This is two thousand eighteen, every home has two or three cars at least. And, you know, if you have a tangling function, your families pass park on another street.
So this, this wouldn't.
We can't be losing any of our parking.
This, this doesn't impact the parking at all?
On the south side, not the north side, most sides of the park.
But, and again, there's no part of this proposal that takes away any parking.
So what you're saying is what's there now will be there afterwards.
With the exception of new, some new curb, new pavement, some, some, some lights like on the early road and bike path. Yes, sir.
Uh, right, right next to our sidewalk, we have our gas tunnel. And, you know, that's going to have to change. That's a lot of gas lines. That's a big mess. She's, she's had hers fixed and right next to the sidewalk, that's where you always are.
Mm-hmm.
You know, she wants to do something, you know, that's.
No, absolutely. We, we dealt with that when we did Etna Road, um, the first phase. I keep saying like, this isn't part of Etna Road. Uh, when we did the first phase of Etna Roads, we, we deal with that. It's part of the scope, it's part of the, the area that's restored afterwards. Um, and so it's certainly something that we deal with.
Yeah, we'll be coordinating, we'll be coordinating with all of the companies throughout the summer. And it'll be, um, we will work with them to relocate any of those things that you need to have in the way as part of the project.
Will there be lights on both sides or is there only going to be lights on the south?
No, it's lights on both sides. If you can see. You know, we want to alter it. Similar to one side, yeah. I know you're familiar with the stretch down at the first phase of it and they coordinate that for the festival.
Right, I have a question. This is trivial, but is there a difference in the lighting?
Yeah, I mean, typically, you know, size, some of them, some of them, some of them.
Yes, sir.
Um, our ramps are going to change for entrance and driveway.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to have, it's going to be concrete, we're going to have blacktop across the front.
We would, uh, on the side, on the south side of that bike path is over the multi-use trail, we're proposing to put that. Every drive approach should be replaced with concrete.
So we're having, our, I've got a nice tight little driveway, then we're going to have a blacktop edge or a glass substance. Where does the bike path just be blacktop?
Yeah, tie it in to your driveway.
We have a strictly nice looking street lights in campus, less ugly, blacktop would have more regard. It's a simple, I'm sorry.
Want to go out on a limb saying you don't like. Yes, ma'am.
Um, first I want to say I know from bike paths, I think it's a great thing for the city. I do look at all the concerns because they, Etna Road is extremely busy and, or you fly down that road. And you still down that road and it just, I, I guess I need to go to the other end of that and see what happens. I mean, I was pitched to it because I didn't know whether we talked about that. But, um, yeah, it just concerns me that, it concerns a little, I don't know, I just worry because it is very busy and it turns when you fly down that road.
I don't disagree with that. Talking to our parks director, um, who knows a million times more about trails and connected communities than I do, um, she, she would tell you, uh, as someone who's more of an expert as it comes to bike paths and walking trails, that having a wider path there is in fact safer for pedestrians. Um, and that is the goal, is how you, over the long term, this isn't something we're going to do today, tomorrow, five years from now, but the long-term goal of having a community that is connected by different trails, um, that connect not only inside of Whitehall, but connect Whitehall to the greater central Ohio community, I do think is a goal that we should aspire to. And so he, I, I think the idea of having the ability and improve a safer way for kids and, and, and not just kids, but members of the community to get around the community by walking and improving that for them, I do think, um, is an important part of this. I do think having the eight foot wide, uh, path there is safer than a three foot wide sidewalk. Yes, sir.
I've got a question. Um, this is going to be an eight foot wide, uh, six foot or eight foot wide. That's going to be cut into the yards. Like, we got some little house have a fence that's only like a foot on the opposite side of the driveway now, so are they going to replace their fences?
So those will be things that typically we'll get into in final design, but generally speaking, the answer is yes. Um, and again, we're talking a little bit hypothetical because I don't know exactly which house we're talking about. But generally speaking, the goal of the project when it's done is to improve or restore anything that we messed up, whether that's, you know, some of these grass or the approach or that fence or whatever, whatever's impacted in the project and ultimately will be resolved.
See, I don't live on that side of the street, it's not on the white tree. This house right across the street from it, but their drive is going to take part of the driveway. They got another asphalt car.
You're talking about the one, the one on the corner of Etna Road and.
You know, West Falls and Etna.
And West Falls, thank you.
Both the house on the corner there.
Yes, sir.
And then right next to that, we got the alleyway.
Yes, sir.
We got another house there. That's, you take it up, it's going to cut into the hallway.
Yeah, there are.
They're not going to park their car on there. They're not going to be able to park their car on there because they'll be sticking out with the bike path.
So there are, there are two houses on Etna, um, that Ryan and I will have to pay particular attention to as we get into the final design. One of those houses, I can tell you almost on a weekly basis, that gentleman, that person parks their car over the existence side. So, and that already is a, a thing that occurs. There are places where because of, um, existing conditions, um, that the path might have to pinch down a little bit. It might not be able to, you know, true eight foot in areas where there are, um, significant design challenges. And that, those two houses might be one of them.
Now, the other question I had, now, uh, your gas line, your electric line, all that is the homeowner's responsibility to replace the pavement. You got a problem, like a leak or something?
Okay.
Okay, now, if we're going to extend this back, it's going to pay to change the ways of mine, speed the gas and electric line, speed into what's already there.
Okay.
So those are old mines. We're talking like forty-year-old stuff. They're not going to be able to hook those up, you know, to a new mine. You're going to have to replace that mine all the way up to the houses. So they're going to be paying for it.
So there's no cost for our residents. Uh, I don't necessarily agree with your premise that they won't be able to do it because we, we just did similar things on the other phase of it. It, it does happen.
But that even has to be residential.
No, there are some houses on. But it's not the first time that we've had a project that dealt with this issue of gas lines and haven't moved them. We did it in Mayflower, we did it in Rosemore.
Yeah, I don't expect them really going to have to do that for this project.
I mean, so again, we know that there's a couple, but again, if there's a problem within how the service comes in something we pick, well, that would be on our contract and on the, on the gas company. That's not going to be expensive for our residents.
Well, that's what, do you think this is going to affect property values?
I think it will improve property value. I think there are, I think there's data out there that says homes that are, that have bike paths in front of them that are connected to parks and connected to other public facilities improves property value.
Watched see where the light.
And the light, okay. I think we've improved, I think having bike paths, again, having bike paths, having connectivity in the community, I think, improves the overall property value of the area. Yes, ma'am.
I noticed on there the dotted lines, the white ones. Is that the, where the, the path is supposed to go?
Uh, I believe yes, ma'am.
Well, it's right on the edge of the north side.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. So the dotted line on the north side is the existing driveway. I, I meant, I explained earlier that the driveway is that publicly owned portion of the.
That's the right of way.
Yes, ma'am. So that's on the north side. So there is no, again, there is no path. We're not changing anything on the north side other than installing the lights. Uh, all of that worked then. Um, and you can see on, on, on the exhibit, although not exact and not precise, we, we aren't, we don't know yet if we're actually going to encroach outside of the right of way on, even on the south side.
Well, the other reason I'm asking is, we were part of the, we were getting fixed for the curbs and they, the people drive by it up into the yard at times in your right of way.
Right, ma'am.
I just wanted to make sure that that's, uh, going to be the area that.
Yeah.
Uh, you're talking about putting lights up on the north side or on the south side?
Uh. Yellow circles on that exhibit are, I guess it should start with yellow circles or the lights on, sorry. Sorry, I apologize. All right, yeah, nice. Yes, ma'am.
Does it give, where the lights are?
We, not yet. That's something that, again, this is a concept. Um, that'll be things that we do in final engineering if we're successful in obtaining, um, the, the grant. Um, but that's something that we would, we would carefully, uh, look at all throughout two thousand nineteen.
But you're not going to be able to talk to, uh, Sasha?
On the north side? No, ma'am. This project, this project doesn't have the necessary, you know, again, and we try to make this competitive prop as possible. Um, we don't envision any, any improvements to the cycle on the north side. I'd, I'd love to, if we get a piece. Thank you. So there might be some improvements to curb ramps, um, to make them ADA compliant. Um, but again, if you look at, uh, what we did down on that first phase of that, uh, down toward, towards the park, we did improve the sidewalks on, on that on the north side and with the bike path that on the south side. I'd love to be able to replace all the sidewalks down in this area. We just don't have the, the flexibility and the budget to do so. Sir.
Mr. Woodruff, uh, I'm not a resident of Etna and I was curious. I was hoping, you know, hoping you could, uh, answer for me to help me understand better. Now, this is a presentation of what it is that you wish to do. I've been here for many, uh, public meetings where, uh, they have the opportunity to say yay or nay in their feelings towards things. So, and you've asked a lot of the Etna Road folks how you're going to come. Is this simply to present, and it's going to find out what the movement of exhibits, is this simply to present this to them? So when they have questions, concerns, et cetera, then it moves to other areas and then it goes to a public meeting in the future? What is the movement of?
Um, city council has on their agenda this evening a resolution authorizing the application for this application to the Ohio Public Works Commission. Um, we certainly wanted to present what our proposal is and have residents have an opportunity at a very early onset to, um, to voice their opinion on it and to, um, to, obviously voice concerns that they have. Um, and if we're successful, if city council passes, uh, the resolution, uh, we intend to apply forward the funding. Um, and if we're successful, we will take all of two thousand nineteen to continue to work with the homeowners and property owners along this stretch, uh, to ensure that we can.
So once it's, once it's, uh, once it's passed by council, your, your intent is to move forward that is correct?
We submit an application after the resolution is passed to, for funding. And those applications get scored. Every central Ohio community, you see this, one or two applications. Uh, like you said last year, there were twenty-five about a, eight or nine got funded. And so we find out if we got funded in December. And if we do, then we'll probably start doing real engineering. You know, this is a concept exhibit. It's based on, um, you know, discussions that we've had about what, what we think we want to do with the project. Obviously, we've heard, uh, a lot of the people have opinions. And as we move through the design process, we'll continue to communicate with the residents on, on Etna Road. We'll have another public meeting at some point. We'll have to reach out to the ones on the south side of the road to show them more specifically how the bike path is going to work. Um, you know, as we get through the design process. So that, this is just the first step.
So, so in other words, this meeting is pretty important as far as the residents expressing how they feel, any good or bad.
And, and certainly, I think that's why we, uh, wanted to ensure that we reach out to everyone who lives along that, that corridor. Um, and that probably sent out lots of letters to ensure people showed up. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know, are they voting on it or are we considering options voting or if it's a closed vote?
Oh, no, ma'am, it's going to happen.
It has to be here.
Oh, yes.
The one that's voted for it and it's not.
And to be clear, we're voting to apply for the grant.
Correct.
Yeah, I want to understand is when you apply for the grant and you get it, off the.
If, if it happens.
Well, yeah.
But like Jerry pointed out.
It's not like later somebody could come back and go, you know, we don't really like it. I mean, once you apply and you get it, you're going to go forward with the bike path. You would talk to us and say, hey, this is what I'm doing, but if some people understand, it's not like you come back later and go, you know, but we don't want this to happen. Yeah, we wouldn't be going to do that.
What I would tell you is if we get into final engineering and the true impact for each individual property owner is understood as far as if there's any additional easement or, or already working on the existing right of way, we're certainly going to go communicate that. Um, and ultimately, I, if we're awarded the funding, I'd like to think we move forward. But ultimately, the administration, the mayor and city council at any point in time can stop any project and that's the nature of how the budget and, and offered it is. So, I mean, again, this is just to apply for, to see if we can get, it's a three million dollar project. Seventy-five percent of that would be free money to the community.
Doesn't a lot of the money come from DSC, federal government money?
For this project, ma'am?
Your money from city, that's what they told us by the parking there.
You mean for the general budget?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. A good, a good portion of our budget does come from DSC.
Or as much you can do about it. I mean, it's got to go by guideline. You can't take too much. You got to be right on the line. You can't go in.
I, I, I don't disagree with that. Is that, I.
I heard a comment regarding, um, a concrete driveway. And so, looking at this picture up here, I see, I'm assuming that the light spots at the driveways are, is concrete.
Give me a point out, Mr. Green. I, I can do, you don't have to get up. I think what you're saying is this is the bike path that stops and has the concrete driveway.
Right, which is the approach, which you are saying that would be replaced.
Correct.
Now, the dark spots then on the other side of the approach, are those driveways currently asphalt, blacktop, whatever?
Correct, so.
So then also a portion of that would be replaced.
Absolutely. So in this, in this view, um, in this stretch, it looks like we could be wrong. But in this stretch, all of these driveways are asphalt currently. So what this exhibit shows is that we would replace the approach with concrete and then we would tie back a certain percentage of new blacktop back, uh, towards.
But if it's a concrete driveway.
Right, thank you. If it's a concrete driveway, that's.
It shows concrete driveways as you go down the picture.
Well, I'm sure it does. We get, so if someone has a con, a concrete driveway, no part of their driveway will be blacktop, will be asphalt.
All right, so.
We'll match whatever's there.
I heard the question and I, I, I wasn't, the answer I heard, I'm not sure that the person understood what was said because I wasn't sure.
What I would encourage anyone who asks questions about what it's going to look like is go over to the first phase of Etna Road and, and see how, again, you have, um, depending on elevation, depending on height, you have concrete that comes to the, uh, approach, that's thin concrete, and then outside of that goes back to blacktop. If it was a blacktop driveway, we match it blacktop back, but if it's a, you had a concrete driveway, no part of your driveway is ever going to be that asphalt. So it's going to match the concrete.
Can you just be clear about where that first section is now?
Sure. So we wrapped that up in two thousand seventeen. Um, that is on Etna Road between Hamilton and Country Club. So it extends down past, um, H- Hamilton Crossing, maybe the, or the senior independent living, uh, facility. It goes past the schools, it goes into John Bishop Park and goes down and it's kind of where the senior citizen, uh, facility is.
And I believe there are about eight residences on that, in that section.
Correct. Uh, and we would never suggest that there's as many, um, in that area as there is obviously in this one. And that's part of the reason we wanted to ensure that we reached out to as many people as possible to ensure that everyone knew what the proposal was. Yeah, I mean, again, as it turns, shows us improving, um, the ramps, uh, in the sidewalks as it turns the corner, um, onto turns and so it would be improving that area. Again, just as an example. Yes, ma'am.
The electric poles in that, but are on the north side.
Yes, ma'am.
Would those, uh, disappear?
No, ma'am. The only thing that would disappear is the, is the overhead to light that's attached. The only thing that would disappear.
So we still have to contend with the other pole?
Still have to contend with the other poles. I would love to get rid of them, but that's another three million dollars to bury all that. I'd, I'd love to get rid of them, but unfortunately, that's just not feasible in the, in the project. Well, thank you all for coming.
Yes, former service director.
Yes, former service director. I didn't still have him. The first project was a one approved. It's just a place there. This is on Edinburgh Road when you start on Edinburgh from the alley by the church westward to Hamilton. So I'm glad somebody else is so attracted to this project because I see a lot of problems because I know we need problems with the prays of driveways and sidewalks with, especially the kind of plug build project of, because when you have to go back and then you have to beat the slope, then it's difficult not to rub off a bumper. So I just wonder if any, any survey work has been done or maybe a couple graphicals?
We've looked at a little bit of data. We certainly have not done a survey. We certainly have not looked at a total. We've done a little bit. And that's something that as we get into final design, obviously, we're very cognizant of that. And that's why we're showing the little asphalt spots behind the driveway, right? Because we know that we're going to have to do some plumbing and with prays to make this, the driveway doesn't, you know, have this type of one.
What kind of also on the.
On May 11th, I think. Sure.
But anyway, so obviously, we're voting on the concept. If the grant is approved, then are you promising the residents to have a look at apparently a part on plan to see how it affects everybody?
I can commit that we are going to have multiple meetings like this, maybe not at the beginning of City Council meeting, but we're going to have multiple opportunities for the neighbors and the property owners and residents to come in and look at the paving of the project as we come along before we get to final design. That is my commitment. I think, again, this is for most people, I think, to show up to an O.P.W.C. meeting that we've had. And so we certainly don't want to do this project in a vacuum. We obviously want everyone to be well informed and to understand and provide feedback. That's obviously our goal.
I have one quick question. If I understood you correctly, you're going to start this project at the end of the school season so children will not be involved walking to and from school. Is that correct?
I don't know if I would, I don't know if I would say we're not going to start the project. I would think that when we talk to the contractor, whoever that is, that we award the contract to in February of 2020, that we certainly are going to work with them so that they can understand when school lets out and build a schedule off of that. There's a lot of work that can be done that won't impact, will have a less of an impact on kids who are walking in this area. I certainly would envision the paving of the bike path that occurs in front of Edinburgh would occur during the summer. That's our goal. We had really good goals for the first part of Edinburgh Road project and then they all went to the wayside and real construction came in. That's what, you know, again, I mentioned, again, we're in September now. We're not even going to bid for another 16 months. So those are things that we'll work with the school district to understand. They're scheduled, we're with our contractor, whoever that is at the time, to make sure we have the project that has the least amount of impact for the kids in that area.
Very good. Thank you very much.
She can keep coming to meetings. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. So this is our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes.
Wait, hold on, hold on, sorry. I'm not done.
Never mind.
We had comment sheets. We had comment sheets. I hope everyone had an opportunity, good, bad, or different, to fill one of these out. Again, your feedback is very important, so we can make sure we'll get you one in the back there now. And then William, who also is our second man, has a sign-in sheet. Again, we just ask that everyone who's here that's here this project have an opportunity to sign that as well. No?
Never made it on your side.
Well, then we will make sure that that happens before we let the consultants do it.
We can email you.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's fine. That's fine. Just leave the email address on there that they can email us correct.
Yes. Okay. If you want to fill this out on your, separate from your team, just email us, email us on there.
Last thing, ma'am, you are correct. Or can you email us on there? Go free, email it in. I think there's a deadline. Yeah, we have to, the application gets submitted and I have some on that. So you need to be back, you need to be back by Friday. We appreciate it. Be back after that is fine too. We just can't, we won't have enough of the application. Thank you. I think that is now.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
If we find like that it's getting really close to people, I know it's still like that part that's ours, could we do six feet or are we set on eight feet being the bike path? Does that make sense?
The answer is we're going to address those as they come up. I don't necessarily want to commit to that this evening just because I don't know what the conditions are going to be once we get out there. I don't know, I guess we haven't done the actual survey on where the existing right of way is today and what, if any additional easement, we may require. Those are all things that we will, if we're awarded the project, are going to spend the next year working through. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to cut off my nose and bite the face. I'd rather see the project that there are places that has to dip to six than to say, well, no, we have to have an eight or nothing. I mean, that's just not, that doesn't make for good public service. So that's, that would be my long-winded answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. As I said before, it is our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes to state your issues, concerns, praises, gripes, whatever they may be.
Gerald Bixton, 3877 Downey Street. The dress dropped today tonight because it's so hot out. I just want to clear up the misnomer of free money. You know, there's no money that is free. And I hope that you and everyone out here understands that when there's money that comes in, federal, grant, whatever it is, it's actually taxpayers' money, which you, I, and everyone else pay them. So free money is just kind of a misnomer. And the other thing, and I don't wish to be a Debbie Downer about it, and I want the city to succeed. I like bike paths. I think they're terrific and all of this. But the fact is, is when, and taxpayers should be aware of this, when you say that there will be no tax increase, indeed, there won't. But all of these things that you're using the tax dollars for, whether it be bike paths or 11 million some dollars to buy parcels of land, et cetera, that's kind of on credit. And the fact is, is we'll be paying on that credit for years to come. And when you pay on that credit through the budget, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Miller can certainly correct me, but then it takes away from other things within the budget. It seems like if you only have this much money and this much is taken up in credit on things that you bought, then there's only this much left for other things, which includes things like maybe the entirety of Westfall, et cetera. And I just think that's an important thing, particularly for the taxpayers to understand. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time?
One more, Miller. Collingwood Avenue. I'm vice president of Whitehall Senior Citizen Club. And on the behalf of our group, I would like to publicly express our thanks for the things the city provides for us. Study shows the importance of socialization for healthy aging. We have an active senior group, thanks to our peer volunteers, that is also aided by several departments of the city. The city has given us a place to meet and helps us with transportation for our trips. The parks have provided a friendly staff to maintain the facility and has helped plan its activities every month for senior activity, which has been drawing quite a bit of interest. Special events, they print our newsletters for us, they give us advice, and they provide a safe and convenient location for us to meet. The fire department, police department participated in a safety committee to educate and form our committee so we can pass that information on to the rest of the group. The fire department has even volunteered to challenge those that spray enough to chicken food, which is a domino game. So far, we haven't had takers. Randy Jones taught a group of CPR and taught AED for those that's interested. The canine group have been there with the dogs and the people really enjoyed that. They love the use of dogs. And the IT department has helped us when we have electronic problems. They also have planned a second workshop to teach us how to use our phones and the computers. We don't have youngsters around to teach us. We don't know the terminology to even understand the manual. So they've been of great help to us. City officials, the mayor has been there for many of the meetings to support us in many ways. Attorney Bettins has been there to teach us about the IDs for solicitors, about the new programs and help us about scams and things like that. Zach and Kate have been there to help us know about the projects that's going on in the city just to keep us informed. And everyone that we've asked to come have been willing to come and speak, answer our questions. And I just wanted to give all of the city officials in the city for the things that are helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time?
We're on Edinburgh Road. I think a bike path is a great thing. I also think in some ways it is our fault for not being at this meeting all the time. We're kind of voting in a bubble. We're thinking about it in a bubble. Like when we think about this issue, we're not going, what could, some of that money have gone to? The 25% or whatever we would be spending, it could have gone to something else, but we don't know because we're not, probably attending these meetings, paying enough attention. So we will correct that. I will correct that. I mean, I think, you know, bike path's a good thing. I'm still concerned about the traffic on that road. And I understand, you know, the findings are that it's safer, but I guess, you know, we'll find out. So that's all I can say.
Who else would like to come forward? All right, well, we thank all of you for your comments and we will move on. And we will start with our standing committee reports and we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Baylor.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday. We discussed a number of ordinances that I think will be introduced tonight by Mr. Rodriguez. And minutes are on file and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back room here.
All righty, thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy did meet on Tuesday. We have no pending legislation. Our minutes are on file. We meet every other Tuesday, 6:30 in the back. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
Thank you, sir. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday in the back. We have two pieces of legislation we're voting on tonight and we will meet next Tuesday after 6:30, sometime after 6:30 in the back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file and we'll meet again in the back sometime after 6:30 next week.
All right, thank you. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week. Our minutes were on file. Today, they put out that our splash pad is supposed to be closed as of yesterday. With the heat, they are going to keep it open the rest of this week, so if you get a chance going over there, nice cold water, it's really nice right now. We'll meet again next week in the back, around 6:30.
All right, thank you. Those are all of our standing committee reports. We'll move on to our officials' reports and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Ken Madder.
Good evening. I'm glad to see everyone here this evening. Please feel free to come back. We like it and we appreciate you. I'd like careful consideration of ordinances 72, 73, 82, 85, also resolutions 31 and 35. Now, I have some good news. Age Friendly Columbus is now becoming age-friendly Franklin County. And I have been invited to go to a meeting so we can learn more about how Whitehall can get more involved in supporting senior citizens in Whitehall. And basically, what age-friendly Franklin County will do is empower our older residents and other community members to work together to identify our strengths, challenges, and opportunities for improving the lives of senior citizens and thus improving the lives and quality of lives of the entire city. So I just wanted to let you all know that I'm looking forward to getting involved in that. And I'm sure I'll probably be asking a few people to kind of help me with that task as we go along. And so don't be surprised if I reach out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you, everyone, for sticking around from the city attorney's office for the month of August. I would like to report that in our mayor's court, we successfully prosecuted 248 cases. Out of that, just so that I can give the public just an understanding of what I'm about to say, what I do every month is I look at the cases based upon Whitehall residents versus non-Whitehall residents. When I first took office, one spurious accusation that our city was given was that we were not a safe city. And I really wanted to see if the data supported that. And every month, I report to council what those actual numbers are versus Whitehall residents versus non-Whitehall residents. And in the month of August, out of the 248 cases that were prosecuted, only 33 of those were committed by Whitehall residents of a criminal nature. So that was about a 13% trend. We generally trend at about two or three to one of those cases in the city of Whitehall of crimes that are occurred are generally done by non-Whitehall residents. And so what my office has done is we've created what I've titled as Strategic Community Initiative, where we do a plea agreement offer with non-Whitehall residents predominantly to assist them so that they get off of the pathway of committing crimes, not only in the city of Whitehall, but also throughout central Ohio. So we've been doing that for the past three years. I invite you, anyone, if you're ever curious, to come out to Whitehall Mayor's Court. The reason why I'm taking the time to do this is because I love seeing this crowd here tonight. So I'm going to take my opportunity to invite you to Mayor's Court on Tuesdays and you can see it in action. Also in action, we also have the first city suburb mayor's court that is doing a special docket for opiate and drug use. And that has just started. We're about four weeks in for the life of the grant. We have this grant which comes from federal dollars through the state. The mayor initiated it. I love her for thinking about the city in that way. We have, we will only successfully have about 30 individuals that will matriculate through that court. And so far, in the past four weeks, we have about four individuals that we've identified that need this special service. I would like to thank Councilwoman Heck for coming out today to actually seeing that in action. And then lastly, I would like to report to the city, and before I do so, I would like to publicly thank our service director, Zach Woodruff, for putting and pressing as much as he could through code enforcement, the issues that many of you, members of council, many of you as a public have seen in the Roses parking lot. Many of you have gone through that parking lot to go to Kroger, to go from McDonald's to Chase, and that parking lot has been in very bad disrepair. Our service director has done everything possible through the use of the code violations to cite the owner of the property. That being said, I escalated the matter through the city attorney's office and sent certified mail to the owner, encouraging them that this matter will be escalated to another level. That property owner reached out to me through a, through a management company that has just now assured me that they have now hired and they are currently in contract with a company named Greenscapes to do 15 tons of, to fill 15 tons of potholes in that property. company named Greenscapes to do 15 tons of, to fill 15 tons of potholes in that property, to also crack seal the, the parking lot, and, and as well as restripe, or restripping it so that people know what the actual boundaries are on the property. So I'm looking forward to that project being done by the end of September, or it will be escalated to the next level, but I just wanted the public to know that they have given me assurances that they're going to do the work, and in good faith, I'm going to give them that opportunity to do so, and you should be seeing a noticeable change in that area soon.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of council. Thank you for coming tonight. I have no official report other than what you have in front of you, and I would like to ask for favorable consideration on ordinances 82, 83, and 86, and resolutions 34 and 35. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have our director of development and public service, Mr. Zach Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everyone has heard me talk enough this evening. I do want to thank you all for coming out and voicing your concerns of the, of the project. It does, it is helpful to have input on both sides of the issue. I also want to, if council and the public is not aware, demolition of the former Golf Dome site started today. That was a significant undertaking to get that ball rolling. We hope to have the site predominantly cleared here in the next 30 days so that the city can take the next steps in looking to market that piece of property, the 14 acres of the entire 35, for office development. And so that, that process started today, and they're making quick work of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have no official report. However, I do wish we didn't have to mail out invitations to get people to come to our meeting.
All right, I'll buy that. That's a good report. All right, well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. We have the mayor's report to council for July 2018, the auditor's expense report for July 2018, the auditor's bank report for July 2018, the auditor's statement of cash position report for July 2018. We also have the auditor's revenue report for July 2018, along with the division of fire overtime report for July 2018. Those are, that's all we've received. Now, the communications petitions and claims, we do have the agenda, we have received the agenda for the September 6, 2018 meeting of the planning commission. At this point, it's time for me to ask our, uh, city, city, city clerk.
Council.
Clerk, council. Just one of those things where everything went away. It happens, you know? I'm, I'm one of those seniors, so that's going to happen to me once in a while. To call the roll on whether each member of council has given a copy of each piece of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any possible item, add-on items.
Cannon?
Yes.
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 All righty, well, we will begin with our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. As usual, we begin with our third readings. First up, we have ordinance 71, 2018, is providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $1 million in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring real property to be used for municipal purposes.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 71, 2018, and move to have it tabled indefinitely.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Morrison for, to table ordinance 71, 2018 indefinitely. Questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I could, so that the public is aware, ordinance 71, 72, and 73 are financial vehicles that would enable the city to fulfill the court order acquiring the Woodcliff condominiums. These three vehicles, after consulting with additional bond counsel, we are asking that ordinance 71 be pulled from the agenda and that ordinance 72 be increased from $9 million to $10 million. It, ordinance 71, 72, and 73 add up to $10.7 million by eliminating ordinance 71 and increasing 72. It's financing the same amount, but doing so through vehicles, now only two, that will save the city money through their issuance.
Okay. So in essence, we're just taking $1 million from 71 and adding it to 72?
That is another way to say it, yes.
No, no increase in anything?
No increase.
Same amount of money all the way around. All right. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck? Yes.
Morrison? Yes.
Bailey? Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Yes.
Well, ordinance 71, 2018 has been tabled. Next, we have ordinance 72, 2018, is providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $10 million in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the acquisition by the city of a portion of an approximately 37-acre parcel in the northeast corner of Hamilton Road at East Broad Street, all in support of economic development and job creation within the city that will result in the elimination of blight and nuisance on and around the acquired property.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 72, 2018, and move to adopt as read.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cannon for adoption of ordinance 72, 2018 as read. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey? Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
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 Order 72, 2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 73, 2018, is providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximal, maximum principal amount of $725,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the cost of, of a, of a court appro, I missed that sentence, that's why. Of a court approved final settlement of claims made by the city in the case of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, Etta versus Olander, Thomas, J., Etta, case number 2007 EVH 060217 in Franklin County Municipal Court.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 73, 2018, and move to adopt as read.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Elmore and a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of ordinance 73, 2018 as read. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Yes.
Order 73, 2018 has been adopted. Our next piece of legislation under third reading is resolution 31, 2018. It's authorizing the mayor to seek financial assistance from the Ohio Public, Ohio Public Works Commission for the funding of the Etna Road and Sigmund Street Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce the move for the adoption of resolution number 31, 2018.
Second. The motion by Ms. Heck and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and adoption of resolution 31, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
No.
Heck?
No.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Resolution 31, 2018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have under third reading. Under second reading, we begin with ordinance 80, 2018, it's amending 745 vendors and solicitors of the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next, we have ordinance 81, 2018, amending 161.37E, table of authorized personnel to increase the authorized strength in the office of public safety, senior administrative assistant, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 81, 2018, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Cannon for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 81, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 81, 2018.
Move to adopt?
Second. Motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Cannon for adoption of ordinance 81, 2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Order 81, 2018 has been adopted. Our next item is a resolution. It is resolution number 33, 2018. It's to authorize the director of development to file an application with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the Morpsey attributable federal funding program for transportation improvements.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Uh, Mr. President, I wish to introduce resolution number 33, 2018, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Heck and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution 33, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Resolution 33, 2018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have under second reading. Under first reading, we have ordinance 82, 2018. It's authorizing the creation of the JAG Grants Fund and the 2017 JAG Grant Expense Account, advancing $13,761 from unappropriated money in the law enforcement trust fund to the JAG Grants Fund, making an appropriation of $13,761 from the JAG Grants Fund to the fiscal year 2017, JAG Grant Expense Account, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance 82, 2018, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 82, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance 82, 2018.
Move to adopt?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of ordinance 82, 2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Order 82, 2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 83, 2018, it's approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $75,000 for unappropriated monies in the general fund to the income tax refunds expense account.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 83, 2018, move to the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Elmore for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 83, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, call the roll, please.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance 83, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Ms. Coniston, Ms. Elmore for adoption of ordinance 83, 2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Order 83, 2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is ordinance 84, 2018, it's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $50,573.50 from unappropriated monies in the capital improvement project fund to the capital improvement account and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next, we have ordinance 85, 2018. It's amending 11, let me back up. It's amending 141.06, senior administrative assistant of the codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance number 85, 2018, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Cannon for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 85, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Orders, the rules have been suspended on ordinance 85, 2018.
Move to adopt?
Second. A motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Cannon for adoption of ordinance 85, 2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Order 85, 2018 has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance 86, 2018. It's authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $50,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the property acquisition and maintenance account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 86, 2018, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Bailey for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 86, 2018. The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Bailey for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance eighty-six twenty eighteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Almore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance eighty-six twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved it out.
Second. The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Bailey for adoption of ordinance eighty-six twenty eighteen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Almore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-six twenty eighteen has been adopted. Next we have Resolution thirty-four twenty eighteen. It's resolving to approve, then announce certificates and declaring an emergency. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution thirty-four dash two thousand and eighteen. Move for the suspension of all the rules, please. Second. The motion by Mr. Cantor and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of Resolution, I'm sorry, for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution thirty-four twenty eighteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
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 Rodriguez?
Yes.
Almore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution thirty-four twenty eighteen. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt, please. Second. Motion by Mr. Cantor, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Resolution thirty-four twenty eighteen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Almore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-four twenty eighteen has been adopted. Our next resolution is thirty-five twenty eighteen. It's authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept the federal fiscal year two thousand and eighteen Edward Burton Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to, uh, introduce Resolution thirty-five twenty eighteen and move for the suspension of all rules. Second.
A motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Ms. Almore for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution thirty-five twenty eighteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, call the roll, please.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Almore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution thirty-five twenty eighteen.
Move to adopt? Second.
Motion by Ms. Coniston, second by Ms. Almore for adoption. Ms. Frymark, do you know the drill?
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Almore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-five twenty eighteen has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have this evening. So that'll bring us to our second opportunity for poll polling. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes to state your name, address, issues, concerns, gripes. I usually say praises for last because they usually don't come that often. Alright. No one? Just want to be sure. Alright, we'll move on to community debate board.
October twenty-seventh is a big day in Whitehall. There's a lot of events going on. First started with employment for seniors. We'll have a five K walk run. Um, you can go to their website and register. Right after that is going to be the Halloween Walk. That will be over at Etna Road Elementary. Um, that will be at one o'clock. And, uh, all the little ghosts and goblins will be there and hopefully a lot of people passing out candy. Um, and then directly after that, WCCA will have their Citizen of the Year Awards. Right now, WCCA is accepting nominations for Citizen of the Year. Um, those can be sent to, um, to the website or, or I'm sorry, to the email, which is WCCA thirteen at gmail dot com. Or they can be dropped off here and I'm certain that Mary would be happy to put those in, uh, my mailbox. WCCA uses judges outside of Whitehall for that, so, um, the sooner you get those in, the better because we will have to get those over to the nomination committee. Uh, there's also on October twenty-seventh, a health fair at the high school from ten to two.
Also on October twenty-seventh, Whitehall Alumni Association is holding a concierge night at the DFW.
It's a big day, yeah.
And night.
And night.
And night. It's day in, night, the whole night. Whitehall Ran play this Friday night at Columbus Wexhaw. Get a chance, go check them out. Good ball club, this year. Who else has something for community debate? Alright, we'll move on, uh, to poll council. We'll begin with Mr. Cantor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think I was for, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming. That was a good turnout tonight. I see a lot of you out on the streets and I always acknowledge you. But it's nice to have a nice crowd like this and, and give us your ideas and your input. It's very much appreciative. Mr. Bivins, thank you so much for your statistics. Uh, when he became our city attorney, I mean, we had all kinds of figures how bad Whitehall was. And the people that, that are out in it, we knew that it wasn't that bad. And Mr. Bivins started giving us monthly statistics and it just shows that our city's not bad. We have a very good city and our crime is not committed by the majority of the citizens of Whitehall. And as far as the senior city center, thank you so much. I'm glad you came in tonight. It's always a pleasure seeing you guys. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alrighty, Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everybody that stuck it out all the way to the end. Um, and thank you to, um, the people that came from the senior center. Um, I really appreciate when you guys work with our school, um, after-school program and summer program. They love to learn about the garden. So that's great to see, so I really appreciate that. Um, thank you, Mr. Bivins, uh, or Attorney Bivins, sorry, um, for having me come out today. And, um, thank you for the mayor for applying and going for that grant. It was great to see all of the back work and all of the stuff that you don't necessarily think that's into it and how much we're really like pulling for those people to be successful. And it's so great to see because I just don't know if they would have the opportunity otherwise. So thank you.
Alrighty, Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to thank everyone for coming out and for participating in this, uh, presentation. This presentation was to inform people and show a concept. And if it's not accepted and voted in, we don't even have an opportunity to possibly move forward. If we want to, by applying for it, if we receive the grant, then there can be more debate and discussion. But if we vote it down, you're done. You have no opportunity. So I thank you all for coming out and have a good week.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to thank you all for coming out and those of you who shared your thoughts and comments. Appreciate that. And appreciate, uh, our fellow council members for their comments and I, I shared a lot of their view. That's it.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see everyone this evening. Ms. Miller, thank you very much for your comments, uh, regarding senior center and Attorney Bivins as well. Thank you for the, uh, update on Rose Bartman. That would be nice to see that stick. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Ms. Almore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I also want to take the opportunity to thank you Zach for doing the, uh, the back work um, involved in the economic development and the changes that, uh, we look forward to seeing. Um, it, it, um, it doesn't surprise me that we have such a great, uh, council and elected leaders who see that as money is available to improve the city and do what it takes to improve the city. Because after all, that's what's going to allow us and our property values to stay the way they are or to increase. And it, it als- also allows people to look at Whitehall and to be proud of Whitehall. And I'm sure nobody wants to live in a, in a city where it's, um, is going downhill. And there's a lot of cities around us that are going downhill because they don't have the, um, forward-thinking group um, that, that sees what needs to be done and, and forward-looking, see what needs to be done as far as the pl- the planning and, and the things that are going to encourage us and to push us in a way that it makes our city a better place. So I want to thank, um, you guys for all the great work that you do and, and the mayor for, you just, I mean, you look forward, you look, um, you have great vision and it, it doesn't happen alone. So, great team. Want to thank all my council members as well. I also want to thank everybody that came out and expressed their concern because if you don't express your concern about your city, um, if you can't do it, nobody else will. So, uh, thank you guys for coming out and participating in the forum and the, uh, the hearing proportion of it. Also, um, I went over to the senior citizens, um, center today. Um, because we had, um, personal on Facebook, social media, that was talking about, you know, wanting to be a part of, you know, what does it take to be a part of, um, a group that goes and looks at or touches base with our, our seasoned citizens. And the first, my first thought is I want to check to see what the season, the citizen center is doing first. Because you guys have a group of people that always come together. Um, that center is out there, it's absolutely beautiful. It has a multi-use. Um, and I would encourage, um, as many people as possible that are over fifty-five or if your spouse is over fifty-five, it's a ten-dollar yearly fee. There are a variety of activities that, um, that happen there and, um, they have a call registry. And so for ten dollars a year for people that are watching on Facebook, if Facebook is live and also that are here, encourage people to be a part of that because that's a revenue-generating way to allow more activities within the, the center. So, um, I want to thank Lenore for being that contact because I put your name out there as a contact, uh, for that. So, um, and so I just want you guys to know that I do check on periodically. You weren't there today, but I do check in periodically and just go in to see what's going on at the senior, uh, citizen center. And, um, they have art classes, weekly walks, and so the bike path and the weekly walks, I think, will go, um, pretty well together. And I just want to thank you all for, for coming out today and have a good evening. Thank you.
Alright. Ms. Coniston?
I don't have a whole lot to say other than, what? I know, I really don't. Um, other than I'm so appreciative that everybody came out tonight. I was thrilled when I heard that people received two letters. I would rather more go out than not enough communication. Um, because that's, you know, that's the only way we're going to get the feedback and to know. Um, we try our best to do what is best for all citizens, um, all the time. Um, we do our due diligence. I know that I talk, I, and actually, Sigmund is right in my neck of the woods that I grew up. I grew up right on Etna Street. Um, I lived there from the time I was young to the time I went off to college. Um, and my, my parents still live there, eighty and eighty-four, uh, years old they are. I love our senior citizen center. I am thankful that I work for an organization that just does things for seniors. Um, our motto is thrive after fifty-five. Um, so, and I'm right in there. I, you know, I, I am a part of that population. I would encourage you to come out and to visit, um, me in Delaware. I know it's kind of far, but I would love to share some ideas that I have, um, with you and you to share some ideas with us. I think that collaboration is kind of, you know, the key to learning how to improve and, uh, and do better for, for everybody's community. I want to thank you all again for coming out and hope to see you next time.
Jeez, I guess I get to say something. Alright, well, I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Uh, we really appreciate you all being here. Um, and I want to ma- I want to comment on a couple of things that I heard this evening about regarding grants, um, and free money. And, uh, free money is taxpayer money. The free money that you get from a grant does come from taxpayers. But the way I see it, we would be fools not to accept money that the city does not have from someone that we don't have to pay the money back to. So, um, it just wouldn't be prudent on our part not to accept grants. What do grants do? Grants help us sometimes put a policeman on the street. Grants help us sometimes, uh, put a canine on the street or in a car even. Grants provide, uh, almost a free paving of roads. Grants provide just about everything that the city is involved in. Almost everything we do, we can just about get a grant for if we apply for it. And if we don't apply for it, somebody else is going to get it. So why shouldn't it be us? The money is there. It's already allocated. I paid a penny, you paid a penny, the people in Cleveland paid a penny, everybody paid a penny and they put it in this big pool for grants. So, it just, it just doesn't make sense for us to not go after the so-called free money. It allows us to use the budget more effectively. In other words, it, to get those grants totally, um, allows the city to operate in a much more, um, financially prudent manner, I guess I could say. I don't know. I'm not a smooth talker and I don't know all kinds of big words. All I know is what common sense tells me. And common sense tells me if somebody's going to give me something for free, I'd be a fool not to take it for the most part, almost anything. Sometimes, you know, I wouldn't want to have a bunch of free cookies because that might not affect my health very well. But, uh, for the most part, if somebody's handing out money, we ought to take whatever we can get. That's what I think. So, I want to, again, thank everyone for being out here tonight. Uh, we're going to see y'all at the next meeting, I'm sure. And we have no other official business, so a motion of adjournment would be in order. Who's got one? Well, then we'll sit here all night. Move to adjourn, second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Rodriguez for adjournment. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?[1788.24]